I call to order the threadworm meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Doctor of meeting agenda.
I am aware of no changes to the current agenda, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Court Candell, seconded by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Approval minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of August 2nd, August 31st, and August 31st, July 1st.
Motion by Treasurer Hallow, seconded by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Reader?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Candell? Aye.
Public announcements. Public comment. Consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to the established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or an public source requests, act, or part to the meeting in which the Chair of the meeting may remove such item. From the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Number... Number equalled. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by majority roll call vote of those present in voting.
Per the information in front of you, we have a total of $601,934.10 in invoices that require approval.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with orders of $601,934.10.
Second. Motion by Treasurer Hallow, seconded by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Item removal from consent agenda, public safety report. Mr. White.
Good evening, Captain. Good evening, members of the Board. Audience participants, an honorable guest we have tonight, some... One, I think, very honorable guest in our... in our audience. And that is firefighter Sergeant Timothy Lanon. I'm going to ask Tim if he'd like to come up now. So just a few words for, um... You know, those in attendance tonight, the... American Fire Department has been around since the days of Benjamin Franklin. By comparison, not to guess that you're old. By... By comparison, the Lennox Fire Department has been around since 1989. So we're... We'll start to begin to see something which was unbathomable just a few years ago, and that is the retirement of some of our long-serving members, the folks who built and led this fire department for many, many years. After 25 years, Sergeant Lanon had decided to in fact retire from the Lennox Fire Department. I think it is only right and worthy that we recognize his service tonight and remind the community, and I think it's just a good time to do that, of the commitment that these men and women make every day to Lennox Township. Whether it's the countless trainings and meetings that they attend on our behalf, whether it's checking out trucks and equipment on nights when the rest of the community is home with their families, whether it's the proverbial running into the burning building or standing on the side of a ever-increasing busy highway, whether it's going into a violent scene or more recently running into a situation with the invisible bullets of COVID. These men and women really do, every day, prepare to give the ultimate sacrifice in service to all of us. For that reason, when somebody actually decides to retire and go on and have a little more fun, we want to make certain that they were recognized for that time that they spent with us. I will tell you that what I will miss most, and I hope you won't be a stranger about Tim, is when we would show up on scenes, they could be horrible, awful situations. And when we arrived on the scene or we arrived at the firehouse or we arrived here at the Township Hall for something, Tim always has a smile for everyone that knows Tim. And that smile, for all of us in those stressful situations, is incredibly reassuring. It's not a smile of laughter, it's not a smile of humor, those scenes aren't neither. It's a smile that everything is going to be all right. We all knew when Tim arrived that everything was going to be all right. So with that, my friend, I think Chief Hartway and Assistant Chief Traveling have a little something for you.
Tim, in recognition of your 25 years, I can give you this bottom plaque. This is in recognition of Sergeant Timothy Lanon for 25 years of outstanding service to the Lennox Township Fire Department.
Yeah. In recognition of your service to the Lennox Township Fire Department, I'd like to present your homest to you. May you look at it and remember the time that it was back with us. I know we love all you members and appreciate what you gave us as a part of it.
I would like to thank the Board, present in the past, for always supporting Lennox Fire. Without you guys, we wouldn't be what we are. I would thank you all, and all the years of training, and all the... All the... So, thank you for letting me be a part of the Township Fire Department for twenty years. It's been very rewarding. Got to thank my family.
Uh, just a couple other mentions, uh... While I have time to... At the microphone here, um, I would like to mention since, uh... I don't think we have a meeting before this. The Fire Department is, uh, in fact, planning to hold its open house. We had put it on last year uh, due to the COVID pandemic. Uh, we are going to reinstate that this year. The Fire Department, uh, Fire Prevention League Open House will be held October the 3rd from 11:00 AM until 3:00 PM. Uh, and so we hope that, um, all the Board members, uh, and community residents at large will come and join us that day. It's a great demonstration. Uh, we keep it all outdoors, so it, uh... So, uh, we ensure safety with regards to what's going on, uh, in the world with the pandemic. And, uh, like I say, we hope to see you all there. With that, um... I haven't got anyone in the agenda a little bit that I'll review at that point. Thank you.
Mr. White, what's the status of the state fundraiser?
I'm sorry, sorry, I'm not hearing you.
The fundraiser you guys usually have, the state fund?
Yeah, this year, um, that takes a lot of pre-planning, um... And, and the... That's done by the Firefighters Association, actually. Uh, and it supports our, uh, specifically supports a number of, um, uh, community, uh, organizations and services, but it also supports our Shop With Hero program. Right now, we have a pretty good fund balance there. The Firefighters Association told us that. And this year, we would have needed to start planning for that, because we really didn't know what the pandemic would look like by August. So we did, uh, the Firefighters Association decided not to hold that event this year, but certainly like with all else, we hope we can get this behind us and, uh, and, uh, and bring that back. So... Uh, it's not gone forever. It was just a decision that the association made, that they thought maybe they didn't have time to do a good job of planning it, not knowing what they might be confronting once the event arrived. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you.
Unfinished business, Frost Road Water Main Extension Bid Award. Mr. Safe.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, uh, Honorable Board Members. Uh, this item was tabled last month for, uh, funding investigation, and, uh, it's back on the agenda with the same recommendation for Paymar Enterprises to start the work.
Everyone should have in their package a Resolution Number 21-05, which was prepared by our legal for, um, the acceptance of that bid over to Paymar. Do you need me to read it out loud?
No.
Okay.
So if the Board is in agreement with that resolution, we recommend, um, awarding this work to Paymar Enterprises for the low bid of $569.99.17.
Sir, then maybe some of the crowd, I don't know if they would know what's going on with that water main extension. Maybe some of the folks in the audience would like a brief explanation. Could you do that?
Absolutely. Um, there's a, uh, a water extension much needed, uh, for looping the two districts in the Township. And it's planned from I-94, uh, going north along Frost Road to 27 Mile. And that was, um, uh, planned by the public, uh, um... Water and Sewer Department and, uh... And, uh, it was, uh, approved by the Township Board last year to go forward with the design and bidding of, of, of this project. And we solicited, uh, the bids from four, uh, different firms, companies, and we have a low bid from Paymar Enterprises to perform this work. And this is part of the Township Normal Infrastructure Improvement Projects. Thank you. You're welcome.
I will make a motion that the Township accept the bid offered by Paymar Enterprises and approve the project with payment for the project to be allocated from the Township's General Fund, except that in the event and to the extent that funds are approved for the project under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Publication L. Number of Let One Seventeen-Dash-Two, such ARPA funds shall be utilized to pay the project costs.
May I add, uh, Madam Clerk, contingent upon receiving adequate bonds and insurance from the bidder?
Who's that your motion with?
Yes, sir, it was.
Second.
A motion by Court Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
New business fire department dispatch radio purchase request. Mr. White.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the Board, in this year's budget, the Fire Department had, um... Requested funds to replace our dispatch radio. Uh, the dispatch radio, um, is recent, an age where it can no longer be serviced, uh, by Motorola. They don't, they no longer provide, uh, repair work to that radio unit. So that means you'd be buying aftermarket or used parts to keep the device running should it fail. Um... These radios are purchased on a... It's a state radio system, and the radios are purchased on a state bid price. So it's not something, normally for something that's a significant expense, we would go and get three bids for it, but in this case, there is no better bid than what the state has negotiated for these costs. So with that, um... I'm recommending that the Township approve the purchase of the Motorola radio, uh, through Comsource, who's the state vendor, in the amount of $6,067.50 to replace our, um... Unit that while not yet has failed, has reached the end of its useful life.
Make a motion that we approve the Fire Department Dispatch Radio Purchase Request in the amount of $6,067.50.
Have a motion by Court... Court Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you.
Beaumont Letter of Support. Mr. Grayburn.
Good evening, Supervisor, Reader, and honorable Board members of the audience. This evening gives me great pleasure to come forward to this Board and read a letter of support that was sent to us from Beaumont Hospital. As we all know, Beaumont recently opened their facility here in Lennox Township and has dedicated and pledged their support to our services within the community, and this is a great thing. August 12th, there was a letter sent to my office for the direction to the Supervisor regarding Lennox Township Senior Center and Programs. Dear Lennox Township Board of Trustees, on behalf of Beaumont Health, it is our privilege to submit this letter of support for a new Lennox Senior Center structure or program to be rebuilt. Beaumont Health is excited to partner with Lennox Township to establish a robust senior center and program that will be available to the residents of Lennox and Northern McComb County. At Beaumont, we know older adults want to remain as physically, psychologically, and socially active as possible. As we continue to grow and enrich the Lennox community with our partnership, we see the addition of senior services in the area through a variety of community programs and services as an opportunity to improve the health of Lennox residents. To achieve this goal, we ask that you consider dedicating the old Township Hall building to be used for senior services. Over the next coming months, we will have discussions with the Senior Center Director of Lennox Township to create a long-term plan for senior health, exploring the opportunities, and building partnerships to support the operation. Thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to share our support for this vision. We look forward to collaborating with Lennox Senior Director and the team to improve, implement program, and improve the quality of life for older adults who live in the growing and thriving community. This letter was in fact signed by the President of Beaumont, Dear Gordon in Farmington Hills, David Clayes, the Dr. James Lynch, President of Beaumont Gross Point in Troy, and the Chief Operating Officer, Kevin Price, of all of the Beaumont facilities. This letter gained strength as they have now joined with another health system within Michigan, and they are growing leaps and bounds. With that completed with the letter, I'd like to bring it back to the Board of Trustees from the Supervisor's office with a recommendation to review this letter by legal counsel and ask that legal counsel come back in thirty days with considerations. That will send it back to the Board. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to have legal counsel review and advise on the letter sent by Beaumont supporting the senior center.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Grace Community Church waiver request. Mr. Safe.
Thank you again, Mr. Supervisor. Um, Grace Community Church, back in May, um... Of 24th, have submitted plans, site plans to the Plan Commission. And part of that submittal, they're asking for a couple waivers on the extension of the public sidewalks across the property and also allowance of the gravel, um... Access onto the property, not in the parking lot, but just to the north, uh, barn. Uh, this would be under the engineering standards and can only be waived with, with the Board action. Previously, we have allowed this, um... The Board had granted that waiver, um, because it didn't make sense to do a paved hard surface, for that area in, in the back. And for the sidewalks, uh, we worked with the attorney to draft an agreement that would be recorded with the property, that in case of any extension adjacent to this property, they will be required to extend their sidewalks in the future. And this will be recorded, run with the land at any point, if there is an extension of, of a neighboring sidewalk, they will be required to extend it. We, as, as, uh, Planning Commission and Engineering cannot waive this requirement unless the Board waives it, uh, as, as a motion and... And, and grant that motion to the applicant. So it's a deviation from your ordinance. Not sure if the applicant is here.
I would like to make a motion that the Board, uh, approve the waiver request from Grace Community Church with the, um, requirement that at a future date, if a sidewalk is required on an adjacent lot, they would also be required to connect those sidewalks.
Oh, I'm sorry. If I may add, the, the gravel, um, surface, if that's also recommended?
Also, yes, I'm sorry, to also, um, approve the deviation or the variance on the access drive to remain a gravel surface. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Trustee Curly. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you.
I did speak to our planner earlier today regarding this, and, um, it was his recommendation that the, um, approval for rezoning be approved with any and all development on the, on the site would require plan approval as well as special land use approval. So all the Board is, is actually, um, approving tonight is the change of designation on that piece of property, or those pieces of property, from commercial general to industrial restricted.
Yeah, we, we did approve it at the meeting, but it was just site plan approval, not site plan, but rezoning request.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning request of Nineteen-Oh-Six-Twenty-Seven-Four-Zero-One-Zero-One-Three-Zero-One-Four-and-Zero-Twenty-One for Khalid Zatuma, and to change the zoning of the properties from commercial general to industrial restriction, with any and all development requiring site plan approval as well as special land use approval.
I second that.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Reader?
Nay. Resoning Request Nineteen-Dash-Oh-Six-Dash-One-Three-Dash-One-Five-One-Dash-Oh-Oh-Two. Right by.
Good evening. My name is Bill Telderson, from later associates representing Mr. Hyler this evening. This property is located on the east side of Bradshaw, about thirty and a half mile road. Uh, it is master planned as commercial. Uh, he proposes to put in a, uh, uh, home sales yard, pre-manufactured home sales yard at that point. Uh, if you have any questions that you can share with us today?
No, I don't believe anyone has any questions. I believe the motion's in order?
I'll make a motion that we table this rezoning for Nineteen-Oh-Six-Thirteen-One-Fifty-One-Zero-Zero-Two to Fred Hyler for thirty days for his additional fact finding. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Medical marijuana facilities licensing discussion.
This item was brought before as our planner, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. He is requesting that the Board consider reopening licensing of facilities, accepting the applications until the end of 2021, um, as long as the applicants follow the submittal guidelines that the Township Planner has laid out. We had talked a couple months ago about revising an ordinance, and, um... I'm not sure that revision has been completed by the planner, but certainly any changes to that ordinance, these applicants will, would be held to that.
The way that we get people near their, near their deadlines?
We don't, yes. That is something that we are currently under advice with our legal. Um, so yes, we are looking at that.
Thank you. And this would be, you're extending, we're going to extend it to December 31st, then?
Yes, this would open it up for any new, um, people that come in that might want to apply for a license. Um, however, they would be held to all the same standards that are in, currently in place or any changes that are made to the ordinance by the planner.
The campus style, the whole?
Yes, sir.
The whole shebang?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, with going along with that.
That's the case. I would like to make a motion to authorize the acceptance of medical marijuana applications until the end of 2021 pursuant to applicants following the submittal guidelines that the Township Planner has in place. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Connel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. New Deputy Treasurer appointment.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Karen Caltz and accept the recommendation appointment of Gina Walker as the Deputy Treasurer. Second, that motion?
I have a motion by Treasurer Hallow, supported by Court Candell. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Connel?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Modification of Code Enforcement Officer position.
As many of you are aware, we have, not, some time ago, I think in June, we hired a code enforcement officer. Since that time, we have... Since that time, we have, um, kind of involved her in some other things. A recent conversation with her, she had stated that she wouldn't mind becoming a full-time employee as opposed to contract employee. So I did have a conversation with her, and she has agreed to accept a full-time position at fifteen dollars an hour, as long as it is approved by the board. So that would be my recommendation.
And to assist in other areas such as?
Such as the codification of our ordinances, and to become backup in some of the other positions that we currently don't have backup people. For instance, we don't have a backup person that knows how to do utility billing. We don't have a backup person to help if there was a problem with, uh, payrolls and things like that, so kind of use her as a utility person to learn some of these things, um, throughout the township.
I second that.
Randy, you originally made the motion?
Um, sure. I will make a motion to approve the code enforcement officer's hours being increased to thirty hours a week, making her become a full-time employee to broaden her scope of responsibilities.
Can you leave the pen there?
Okay, she would be working at, at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour.
What's, why is this thirty? Wouldn't it be thirty-two?
No, we work thirty hours a week.
Oh, that's true. Okay, much so. All right.
I second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by Trustee Curly. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Candell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
November Board of Trustees Meeting Start Time Modification.
November's Board of Trustees Meeting is scheduled the day before the November election. So it was, it is my request that we change the start time from six thirty to four o'clock. That would allow us time to get the building ready for the election early Tuesday morning.
Is that a motion?
That is my recommendation. I will make a motion, yes.
I can make a motion, boy, and you've done a lot.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the time till, for the November Board of Trustees Meeting till four o'clock to allow time for the election, or the clerk's office to get ready for the election the next morning at seven.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
Clifford?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Hold the counter. Call from the board.
I'd like to congratulate Gina on making Deputy Treasurer. I wish you luck in your new endeavor. And I have contacted, um, it, and I guess I could say it, we contacted, between Mr. White and I, we've contacted the Rock Commission of the State about doing a traffic signal for twenty-nine aggression. Nothing's came, yet, but there's a possibility.
Adjournment.
Make a motion that we adjourn the Lennox Township Board of Trustees Meeting Tuesday, September seventh at seven oh four PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's begin adjournment.